The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Welcome to the swearing in ceremony of our new Estevan City Council. Today we are joined by Justice Miller to swear us in, and I guess I'm first.
Do you wish to swear or affirm? All right, so I'll get you to hold the Bible in your right hand, and then if you...
I'm not going to repeat it.
You just read it, and I'll follow.
Excellent. "I will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward of a promise or payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required by me, the City's Act, and any other act by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Disclose any conflict of interest within the meanings of Part 7 of the City's Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act and any other act by the council."
So Anthony Sernick, having been elected to the office of mayor, do you solemnly promise and make that declaration?
I do.
All right, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I'll get you to sign. You can sign that one right there. Oh, there.
All right, that's your spot.
I'll sign there.
I'm not quite there yet.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll just get you to read that, and make sure that you want to swear. Make the... Read that.
Okay. "I, Shelley Veroba, having been elected to the office of councillor to the city of Estevan, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to be held to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understood, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the City's Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of the office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Will disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part 7 of the City's Act, and I will comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act and any other act by the council."
Shelley, having made that solemn declaration, congratulations. I will get... And I'll get you to sign. And so you sign right there. And also there. There we go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Do you wish to affirm or do that in the Bible? Okay. Okay, so you're going to affirm and make this solemn declaration, so I'll just have you read everything from that line on.
Okay.
Thank you.
"I, Tom Moss, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Estevan, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the City's Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part 7 of the City's Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act and any other act and by the council."
Having made that solemn affirmation and declaration, I'll get you to sign all three copies, and your signature right there. Official? Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Hi, Dave. Do you wish to swear or unbut...
I can swear.
You can swear, okay.
I'd better have one for reading.
You got just... And start from there.
"I, Dave Elliott, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Estevan, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to my position as a member of the council if required of me by the City's Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of the office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part 7 of the City's Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act or any other act and by the council."
All right, so having made that solemn declaration and promise, you can now sign the three documents, please, and I'll get you to sign right there. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do you wish to swear or affirm?
I'll affirm.
Okay. And that affirmation, just start right there.
"I, Matthew Dubowski, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Estevan, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rule of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the City's Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part 7 of the City's Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act and any other act and by the council."
All right, Matthew, having affirmed and solemnly promised and declared, I'll just get you to sign all three of these. It's official? Congratulations, sir. You've heard this so many times, Brian, you should be able to recite it by memory. Do you wish to swear or affirm? Do you want to hold the Bible?
I can just swear.
Okay, if you just... You can just hold it in your right hand or your left hand, that's fine. Okay, and so just start from... Start from there. Okay, thank you.
"I, Brian Johnson, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Estevan, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required of me by the City's Act and any other act and by the council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part 7 of the City's Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rules of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act and any other act and by the council."
Thank you, and having made that solemn promise and declaration, I'll get you to sign each of these three documents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's official. Thanks, Judge.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do you wish to hold the Bible or simply affirm as you go? Okay, and so just read from there and...
"I, Kirsten Walizer, having been elected to the office of councillor in the city of Estevan, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of this office. I am qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise of payment or reward for the exercise of any corrupt practice or other undue execution or influence of this office. I have read, understand, and agree to abide by the Code of Ethics, Rule of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to my position as a member of council required by me by the City's Act and any other act and by council. I will perform the duties of office imposed by the City's Act and any other act or law and by the council. Disclose any conflict of interest within the meaning of Part 7 of the City's Act and comply with the Code of Ethics, Rule of Conduct, and Procedures applicable to the office I now hold that are imposed by the City's Act and any other act and by the council."
All right, having made that solemn promise and declaration, I'll just get you to sign right there. Kirsten, it's official.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Justice Miller, for your time today.
My pleasure to be here, and best of luck as mayor and councillor in the coming years.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for attendance today. It's awesome, good to see, and here is your next council for the next four years, so... Good evening, everyone. We will call to order this meeting of Estevan City Council for November 25, 2024. So, first up, can we have a motion to accept the agenda? Councilor Leeser, Councilor Veroba, all in favor? Carried. Errors and omissions, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of September 23, 2024? Councilor Dubowski, Councilor Johnson, all in favor? Carried. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes of November 22, 2024, which would have been the swearing in ceremony? Councilor Moss, Councilor Elliott, all in favor? Carried. Just rolling tonight. Original communications, delegations, and petitions. Can we... What do we... I guess we need them. We have the council meeting scheduled for 2024. Sorry, 2025? Soon enough. Can anybody have any comments? Do we want to... I know... I know for the last couple of years that we've just did one meeting in July and August, which I would be in favor of if anybody would make that motion. Councilor Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was wondering about that, too, if we just wanted one throughout the summer. I was just trying to figure out what was the best, or is it best to leave them in and cancel them closer to the date if there's nothing going on for one or the other?
City Clerk?
Your Worship, Councilor Veroba, it doesn't matter either way, but if you know you're going to cancel some, I would suggest you do it now instead of waiting till the week before, because it just makes people... It's harder for them to adjust their schedules.
I would recommend, then, that we would cancel July 28 meeting.
Okay.
And then leave the August schedule alone. Or actually, August 25, too, is quite... I'd say cancel July 28 and August 25. And then, if need be, if a special meeting needs to be held at any time, we can call it.
Sounds good. Anyone second the motion? Councilor Leeser? Is everybody want to second that motion?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Johnson? Comments? Councilor Leeser?
Just to draw your attention to the Monday, April 14 meeting. The SUMA Annual Convention in Saskatoon runs April 13 to 16 this year. If we're planning to attend, as we have in the past, council will not be available for that meeting.
Very good call. So would the motion go April 14, July 28, or we can do all three?
Yep.
In one motion? Councilor Moss?
One question about the April 14 that you mentioned. Is all of council then at the SUMA, or just one person?
All of council.
Okay.
All of council, so. The motion we have is to drop April 14, July 28, and August 25. Do we have a second, or...
Sorry, to clarify, is there a need to move that meeting up rather than lose a meeting in April? That would be my only concern, is that stretching from March 24 to April 28 at that time of year might not work well for groups that want to come in front of us.
Your Worship, to Councilor Walizer, I don't know when Easter is, off the top of my head. It's which one? It's after the 14th, so you can't move it forward. You want to move it backwards.
Okay, on the 7th?
7.
So we'll move April 14 to April 7?
Is that what you want?
I'll make that recommendation.
Okay.
You got all that?
Yep.
Because I lost control. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second, or Councilor Johnson, you'll second that still? All right, let's... All in favor? Carried. Up next... Up next, under original communications, delegation, petitions, we have the CART report for September and October, but we need to do it separately, correct? No, this one can be done together, so do we have a motion to approve?
I have one question about that. In here, there's two from October. Is that just a mistake or whatever? In the files you sent us, I think there's two from October, but I think there's...
This is September, and this one says October.
I've got three in my file, that's why I'm asking.
So three?
Yep. But I believe October is just an identical one accidentally.
Yep.
Okay.
One might be that we're paralysed.
No, they're just... Go ahead. Excuse me. No, they're identical.
Okay.
Okay.
So you'll make that motion, then? Councilor Moss?
Yes.
All right, we have a second for these. Councilor Leeser, all in favor? Carried. Up next, written reports of committees. Southeast Transportation Hub. This is September and October? Yep, September 24. These can be together as well. October 29. So do we have a motion to approve Southeast Transportation? Thank you, Councilor Johnson, seconded by... Councilor Dubowski, all in favor? Carried. Now for this, do we know that we have to put in a name or something along that lines? Do we... Sir, Councilor Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I was talking to past Councilor Lindsey Clark, and what he suggested is that we do actually put a name in, because somebody from the southeast area, and so it would be good if it's somebody from Estevan. I mean, Raj Percy or somewhere else could put their name in as well, and then you have to be elected, but he said it would serve our area well to have a representative on there.
Okay.
So I believe that's in the close tonight, when we pick which councillors will go to which committee, and so, yeah, I was going to bring that up in close.
Thank you. Okay. So, Councilor Johnson?
I just want to point out that there is a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 in the CART lab for this committee, too.
Okay, so I guess we should... We'll know what's...
Yes.
After tonight, can't it? We'll get it in there. Can't it noted? So, did we vote?
We just... No, we need a motion or a vote.
Oh, so we have seconded... Who motion?
Councilor Johnson.
Or Johnson? All in favor? Carried. Up next is the Estevan Public Library Minutes, September and October, which these can be done together as well. Do we have a motion to approve the library notes? Councilor Dubowski, seconded by Councilor Johnson, all in favor? Anything... I guess we really don't have anybody on this board right now, but is there any... Does anybody know, Councilor Leeser?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Estevan Public Library is hosting a Christmas social on December the 12th at 6:00 PM. They're going to have crafts, cookies, and hot chocolate, and there will also be two live musical performances for the community, and it's being offered free of charge.
Sounds good. Thank you for that. Up next will be the Estevan Humane Society Minutes of January, February, March, April of 2025. How did we get 2025 already? 2024. Councilor Moss?
Yeah, I've got one question. Is it... In all of those, there's a lot of blacked out, redacted. Are those referring to personal numbers, or what is that, if I may ask?
Yeah, it would be something personal or financial. Councilor Leeser, if you want to add?
Thank you to Councilor Moss. I was on this committee last term, and as the council representative, we don't participate in the creation of the minutes, so our boards are instructed that if there's something they don't want made public, that they have to redact it themselves prior to submitting to the city clerk, and that gives them a little more control, specifically in this situation, about protecting the identity of people who donate either their time or their financial resources from being out in the community. So you'll notice some committees redact a lot of minutes, and other committees don't redact at all.
Thank you for that. Okay, good. Did we vote on that? I don't remember.
No.
Who had a motion for that? Councilor Leeser, and seconded by Councilor Veroba, all in favor? Carried. Up next is executive reports. Tax assessor, tax enforcement, permission to proceed for title. I'll just kind of run to the recommendation here. Every attempt has been made to collect on these accounts, and a recommendation would be for council to make a resolution granting permission to proceed with tax enforcement to take the title. Do we have a motion to accept this? Councilor Leeser, seconded by Councilor Johnson, all in favor? Carried.
I don't know, because I can't read this. I don't have this.
So, Councilor Elliott, there's just a list of areas, and again, it's... They only bring it to us when every attempt has been made, so... Councilor Veroba?
So it would have been in your open package that you would have went over this weekend, right? When you and I talked, you said you'd went through the whole package.
I got the email from GDM.
Oh, okay, so it's in your Teams, too, which is probably something that maybe we'll go over later, too, finding in Teams, to just exactly, because it's a lot easier than going through that. There we go.
Sorry.
It's the first meeting. We're... We all... We've all been there.
Sorry.
No, you did get...
Yeah, so we were all in favor, and you're... All in favor. Carried. Up next, under executive reports, City Clerk, 2024 Elections Final Report. Just has a breakdown of all the votes of everybody in this room. I'd like to note Public School Board Trustee Kevin Keating, Craig McDonald, separate school board trustees Virgilito Soto and Karen Mealy. There's a little bit about events polls, special polls, and recommendations, as the election had... The election had an average turnout. Recommend that 2024 Election Council continue to rent voting machines... to rent voting machines for the future. Also recommend drive-through polling, as it was very convenient for most people. There was concerns brought forward of qualifications to vote, and in the 2028 election, this will need to be addressed with more clarification from the province, and also revamp our election website under eligibility to vote. We will have, we will bring better resources and understanding of these voter requirements. Another item that came up during the election was, some residents were confused of which election they were voting for. There were so many at one time. So that will, again, we'll try to bring those resources and a better understanding of those requirements to vote as well. Further thank you to the election team. Josh and the associate returning officer spent tireless hours on organizing materials required to be in part of all aspects of the election. The election workers that stepped up without them, this could not be a successful election, which it was, and we would like to thank Judy, City Clerk. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept? Counselor Leeser?
Sir, I have one question.
Counselor Moss?
Where is it? Recommendations for future elections. I think this is a typo, if I'm not mistaken. Under your paragraph, recommendations for future elections, I recommend that for the 2024 election. I believe that should be the 2028 election.
That's correct.
I thought that when I just read that. So, good, good catch, but, so that'll be 2028.
But again, I'd like to reiterate what you said, that it's, the work was.
You'll second the motion?
Thank you very much. And I second.
You'll second the motion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you for that. Oh, sorry. Counselor Leeser?
Just a point of clarification. When the community's looking at the declaration of results, and it indicates the number of ballots spoiled and declined, can you explain how that would occur during the election process?
So, that's the province's words on their form. It's not our words. So spoiled ballot can be anything from, someone goes into an election booth, and they, they overvote, like, they know they can vote up to six, and they get down there, and they're like, oh, I voted seven. They'll go back to the polling location. Sometimes if we made sure that the ballots were fed in the polling location before you left, we had you stand there. If it was, like, if it was dogmarked, or it couldn't read, it would spit it back out. We would either take you back to the polling location, or we would say, did you fill in the circle? Some people were still just doing an X, or whatever, because they'd done that in the provincial election. So we send them back to the polling location, have them fill in the circle better, and put it through the machine. But we made sure that they, their vote was counted before they left.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Counselor Leeser? Up next, we have the Pleviceite 2024 Election Results. The question was on the ballot, would you support the construction of a third indoor ice facility in the city of Estevan? Yes or no? The final tally was 1,045 voted yes, 1,538 voted no, which I do believe was a 60-40-60 split. So we need, the recommendation is, we're just looking for, the city clerk is looking for a directive on what to do with this matter. So who will make the motion? Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'll make the motion to accept the Pleviceite. That's the motion you're looking for.
Yes.
But also, just to reiterate, that this was not a binding vote. So I've had a lot of people discuss it with me to find out whether or not, is this a definite no? There's not going to be a rank. What do we do? Is it a definite whatever? And it really isn't. The question is still there, because I am hearing that there's a lot of groups that want to come forward with a lot of different ideas. And I think that door is still open to seek, still have those discussions. I think this was just, again, put forward to say, what is, what do the city want? What does the city want? What do the citizens want? And 60-40 is pretty split, still, close, close, that I think the discussions are still going to be had, because you never know when somebody will come up with some good funding, a great idea, or a good way to see what can be done in the future. So the door is not 100% closed on any discussion, either way, in my opinion, but, so I'll make the motion that we accept that Pleviceite numbers.
For that, and that's what I've always said. The way things get built in this city is, is usually starts with one person, turns into a group of people, brings, brings their idea, their dream forward, and they make it happen. We're just here to listen and try to get money out of Jeff. So, we have the motion, just to accept the Pleviceite as is, and a second, or? Counselor Moss, all in favor? Carried. Up next, we have Water Services, the Water Quality Report for September 2024. These have to be done separately, so we have a motion to accept the water quality for September. Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Dubowski. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Counselor Veroba?
I just have one comment. When you look at these water reports, and it says fluoride, it says none. So as it was brought up in the election, it was talked about with fluoride in the water, et cetera. So I have had some people speaking to me about that. And from what I've read, in Alberta, there was two cities, one had put fluoride, still continued to put fluoride in the water, one didn't. And the city that didn't is now going back or talking about going back to putting fluoride in the water. It is recommended. So then I kind of was wondering, why does it say none? But it's, is it because it's not higher than the recommended amount, and that's what we're testing for?
Thank you, Counselor Veroba. Yes, the none would refer to making sure we met regulations, as is titled at the top of the chart. So our normal fluoride practice continues. I know it was on an election a few terms ago, and at that time, it was chosen to continue to use fluoride in the water. But there's just, it's in, in, in normal regulation amounts. That's why it says none.
Thanks for the question. All in favor? Carried. Again, up next is a water report for October 2024. I didn't see nothing stick out there. Counselor Moss?
Yeah, me being picky again, I'm sorry. In his, in his letter, he wrote, I present the following information for this purpose for the month of September. That's just, again, probably a typo from him, just saying that.
Okay, noted. You'll make the motion for that?
Yes.
Awesome. Second, or? Counselor Leeser, all in favor? Carried. Building permit for September 2024. Do we have a motion to accept the building permit for September 2024? Counselor Johnson? Seconded by Counselor Dubowski. All in favor? Carried. Same building permit, well, not the same report, but for October 2024. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Elliott?
I answer.
Okay.
My question is, so, so when, when you say building permits, so then someone has, they've done the paperwork, we've got the professionals downstairs, they've gone over everything, and it's their recommendation that we approve these? Is that the idea?
Yep. Thank you, Counselor, through your worship. This is just standard that we need to put out based on provincial requirements. So downstairs will receive any building permits. They have the estimated value, which is noted here. We currently contract MUNICODE to do the actual building inspection in that process. This is just a report that has to be done monthly based on regulations. The council's aware of the permitting that's been issued in that time.
Awesome. You'll make that motion? Counselor Leeser? Counselor Veroba?
I just wanted to add, it's really good information, too, for us as being on council, to just see what's happening within the city, too. If we're getting extra builds, want to come in, if people are going through, and also to see the amount of money that's being spent in the community every month, every year, on new builds and improvements in the city.
Thank you. We have a secondary for that motion? Counselor Veroba, all in favor? Carried. Up next, we have the Fire Chief's Report for July. Can we, these two to be together? These two can be together for July and August 2024. I don't think nothing really stuck out for me there. Do we have a motion to accept these? Counselor Johnson? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Leeser. All in favor? Carried. Up next, under, we know, no introduction of bylaws, no public hearings and reports, giving notice, the CPKC Holiday Train. Is that at that time of the year again already? Oh, I moan. So the KPC Holiday Train is returning to Estevan to celebrate its 26th season of visiting communities across the network and helping those in need. Event information will be location east of the train station, off Seventh Street. I do believe it's been there for a number of years. Wednesday, December 18th, 3:00 PM in the afternoon. Food bank, food shelf donations. Normally, in the past, everything's been donated to the Salvation Army Corps, and we need to let them know by October 11th, if this is the same. Does anybody have any thoughts on? Counselor Moss?
October, October 11th, this is long gone, but it hasn't been decided yet, obviously.
I'm guessing it's going Salvation Army.
It hasn't been decided yet, obviously, or, or?
I guess it's probably, like I said, come and gone, so.
It's come and gone, so probably they'll just accept Salvation Army again. Is that right?
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll go with that. So, no, this is just a report more for information. Do we have a motion to accept the holiday train coming to town again? Counselor Dubowski? Seconded by Counselor Moss. All in favor? The train is allowed to come into town again. So, motions from committee, non-consideration of bylaws, and we've hit the inquiry section. Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I had a couple. First, I just wanted to go back for the tax liens, just to clarify for anyone listening in tonight. At any point, the land can be redeemed by any person paying the arrears and the costs as specified in Section 19. This will stop the tax enforcement proceed, process, and the tax lien will be withdrawn as legislated under the Tax Enforcement Act. Just so anybody watching that part thinks that we just took over a bunch of different properties, majority of time when that happens, it's formality. People do come forward, and they pay their taxes because they don't want the city to take their property. But in the event that someone hasn't, then that's when the city will become the new owners of that property, if desperately needed. The other thing is, with the mail strike, does the city have a plan for people to get their bills paid? And if so, are we going to just make sure we get it out there for people to know?
Thank you, Counselor Veroba. It was, was discussed with the Treasury Department. So there was a push today on social media to make sure that you sign up for the e-billing. I know we've done a push for that over the last few years, especially with postage costs going up the way they have. And I think it's recommended for people to come in to get their bills and just understand their billing cycle, but also come in and get their e-billing. Is there anything to add to that?
Will interest be charged on those people who do not take the initiative to pay their bill?
Yes, I believe so. So this doesn't abdicate the responsibility to know that you have a bill, a water bill to pay, and to come in and check it. Unfortunately, with the strike, you may, may not get the bill as regular, so please be aware of it, and we will continue to push out on our socials.
Perfect. Thank you. And also, Collins Road, I have had this person come forward in the past, and so again, she came forward and asked about the washboard condition. Her concern is that the road wasn't engineered and designed for the amount of traffic that utilizes that road currently. And I know we had some discussion, but I'll maybe just let you answer that.
Thank you, Counselor Veroba. So we confirmed with the engineer that it was built to provincial standards, that Collector Road, and I have forwarded to the road a drainage manner to make sure that, obviously, as it comes down the hill and there's moisture, it does washboard, so we'll make sure to stay on top of that.
Thank you. Counselor Moss? Inquiries? No inquiries? Counselor Elliott? No inquiries tonight? Joe Lynn? Josh? Would you, actually, Josh, would you give us a quick introduction?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, all of counsel for having me here today. I am Josh Shidibay, the Assistant City Clerk. I joined the organization at the end of July to support administration in the city with the elections. Thank you so much for having me. Looking forward to working for administration and with all of you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Dubowski? Any inquiries tonight? Counselor Johnson?
Over the past week and a half, two weeks, I've had a few inquiries that I've brought forward to the city manager, Jeff, and I'd like to mention that Jeff has been working closely with me on some of these matters, and he needs a little bit more time to address some of those concerns. But we're working closely with, you know, some of the city staff even, to see what we can do with some of these issues. But thanks, Jeff, for your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leeser?
Thank you. On Tuesday, November 19th, I attended a webinar titled Trials From the Trails: Helping Build Resiliency and Supporting Mental Health and Well-being for Elected Officials and Those Who Work With Them. It was a panel discussion from people across Canada in different elected positions, specifically looking at the increased verbal violence and the deterioration in the political environment across Canada over the last two years. There were lots of take-home points, and the one that they really emphasized the most was building that professional relationship with your colleagues for the benefit of the community, but also for the longevity and the benefit of the elected officials. So looking forward to share more about that later, but certainly a good resource moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you for that. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just like to thank all the new and existing councils for putting their name forward to serve your community. It's, it's a very large task with a lot of responsibility, and I appreciate us putting your name forward. I look forward to working with you the next four years.
Thank you for that. Inquiries for me? I see next, December 4th, kind of add to Counselor Leeser there, December 4th, the Estevan Chambers hosting their coffee talk, 8:00 AM, Days Inn, Taylorton Room, and the stars of the event is counsel and mayor. So hopefully we can come out, answer questions. We'll, we'll see you there next Wednesday. City Clerk?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Nothing? That's good. Well, can I have a motion to adjourn? Can I have a motion to go into committee?
Excuse me, I have one question. There's all of the financial there from, Jeff, do we not, do we not have to make a motion to accept that, or anything like that?
That is for your FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to Counselor Veroba, seconded by Counselor Johnson, and all in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.